Grace that is sufficient yesterday, today, and forever. Thank you for those who have interest in the city business. We pray for their families, we pray for their loved ones, we pray, Lord, for this city. We pray for this state, we pray for this nation. We pray, oh Father God, that you teach us to walk before you in obedience. We thank you, Lord, for the wisdom from above. We thank you, Lord, for every good and perfect gift from above. We ask that you bless our efforts in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag, repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin, absent. Mr. Erwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of April twentieth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting and dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. If I could remind everyone in the audience to please to silence your cellphones. Thank you. Approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I would like to ask that item number five under unfinished business be deleted and that the agenda be approved as amended.
I'd like to second that motion.
Any questions from the audience? This is dealing with the noise ordinance, so that is being removed from the agenda. So you're welcome if you would like to stay. We certainly welcome you, we like the smiling faces, so... But if not, at this time...
Ma'am, you have to come forward and state your name and address for the record. Sorry.
Thanks, Phyllis, you took the words out of my mouth.
I'm so sorry.
I'm Jacqueline Lindsay, I'm with A. Beadle, Louisiana, and my address?
Yes, ma'am.
Nineteen oh nine Ray Avenue, Bossier City, seven one 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 two. And I just request, um, thank you, Mr. Darby, but I'd like to know if it's going to be added at a later time.
Not, not to my knowledge, we are looking at maybe some revisions to the ordinance, but we're not going to put this ordinance back before the council.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming, if you, if you would like to leave, you're more than welcome, but we'd like for you to stay as well if that's your wish, so... Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Tara Jackson. My address is two three one six Douglas Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, seven one 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 one. So I was here today to speak about my concerns with the noise ordinance, so you're saying that I don't have that opportunity today? It is being removed.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, you can speak, but we're... It's not going to be heard and it's taken off the agenda, it won't be voted on. And Mr. Darby said he has no intention of bringing it back before the council, so...
At any time.
Not, not in that fashion. As I said, we may look at the ordinance that we already have on the, uh, on the books and maybe do some revisions to that ordinance.
Okay, I appreciate that, but I am not familiar with that ordinance right now. I don't know what I have to do to become familiar with it, but I was here today to state my concerns about the music noise in my, um, in my neighborhood. Do I have that chance to do that now?
Sure, I think Mr. President can allow you at the end of the announcements and comments, I guess, if he would so choose.
Yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. So I have lived, um, at two three one six Douglas Drive for approximately ten years, and I have never seen it as bad as it is right now, within the last probably year, um, of music. I have, on several occasions, probably at least three times or four, called the police to assist with loud music in my neighborhood, and I just don't know how many more times, you know, I can do that, you know, that I won't become a nuisance to the Bossier Parish Police Department. So I thought this was an opportunity to be heard. Um, with me living on Douglas Drive, I live between Benton Road and Airline, which are two, you know, main highways there, main roads. So there's a lot of cut through. Uh, one problem that I'm seeing is it says it's speeding, and the music also with the cars that are coming through, um, cutting through, the music is just extremely loud. And a really big problem is the music behind my house, my backyard backs up to, um, there's like an empty field, and on the other side of that is Riverwood Drive, I could think, so it's probably Riverwood Apartments and maybe some duplexes back there, I'm not sure. But the noise, the music, the cars will sit there for thirty minutes or more at a time. Just boom, boom. It was playing so loud the other day, my windows were shaking in my house. And this is every day.
We currently, and correct me, Mr. Hall, we currently have, you know, ordinance on the book that address that.
Okay.
And, um, that you're doing the right thing by calling the police, so...
If I could contribute to this, I would, I would suggest, have you called your council member?
Uh, when I called to find out about this meeting a few weeks ago, that was my first time knowing who my councilperson, um, is, and I was told it was Tommy. So no, I have not, because I felt that would be a way to also address it, so...
That's a good, I, I get a lot of calls for things like that.
Okay.
And when I get those calls, I appreciate it.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, I have a, also a rapport with, with the administration and would work to, to solve your issue, so...
Okay.
Call your, your city councilperson, and, uh, you know, that's a project, it's not going to go away overnight.
I understand.
But together, uh, with, with you and your council member. Plus, you're also free to call the, the police directly. But it's probably going to take a plan, you know, for them to, um, stake out the area and, and put an end to that.
Would you like to say hello to Tommy? He's right there.
Yeah.
Hello.
Right here, Mr. Darby.
And I do have a copy of the ordinance for you, if you'd like, uh, to get familiar with. And it is available online, if you have access to a computer, you can go to Bossier City,
Okay.
And look at, uh, any ordinance that's on the books. That's where I got that from.
Very good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from Mr. Harvey. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President.
The mayor's got something.
Yes, sir.
If I may just add, uh, to the lady that's just up there, the chief of police is here today. I just wanted you to be aware, the chief of police is here today, and he'll have his people make some random checks down there, but don't hesitate to call us while it's going on, and we'll respond as quickly as feasible.
So I have a motion by Mr. Darby and a second by Mr. Williams to delete item number five from the agenda and to approve the agenda as amended.
All right.
No further public comment, y'all can vote.
Hmm?
I said there's no further public comment, y'all can vote.
Yeah, I don't have...
Oh, is it not there?
There it is, I got it. So this is a vote to remove the item from the agenda?
And to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, and to approve the amended, agenda as amended. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right. No ceremonial matters, uh, in the bids.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number twenty dash seventeen eighty-two, twenty-five oh four North Side Drive, demolition of a dilapidated structure.
Good afternoon, counsel. Uh, this was voted, uh, by the administrative council to be demolished back on February the ninth meeting, um, and there was no addendums. Our first bid is from Three Gen Construction. Their bid bond is included and is for ten thousand four hundred and ninety-nine. One zero four nine nine. Next bid is from Lathan Construction. Its bid bond is included and is for eighteen thousand one eight zero zero zero. The last bid is from Lou Chandler. The bid bond is included and is for twelve thousand five hundred dollars. One two five zero zero. I ask that you approve the reading of the bids.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Is it not up, counsel?
Yes.
Is it showing up on your side?
We're voting, we're all down. I'll say it.
Quorum not met.
I didn't show...
It says defeated, but everyone voted for it.
So it was, you, everyone voted for this item?
Yes. It was seven oh.
There we go. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P two one dash zero four, Walter OBB Carriageway Project, Phase Two.
The engineer's estimate for this was thirty-seven million. We had four addendums. It issued the attendee list for the mandatory pre-bid meeting. It also answered questions and answers, revised the drawings and specifications, and reissued the bid form and revised quantities.
Before we start, I just feel like we need some fireworks or a drum roll.
Hey, Lilly.
Thank you.
Lilly.
We got it.
Pull the microphone down, so everybody can hear you.
Okay, there we go. Our first bid is from Boe Brothers Construction Company, LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. Their bid bond is included. It's for forty-nine million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars, sixty-five cents. That's four nine, three seven nine, five eight oh, point six five. The second bid is from Gilcrest Construction Company, LLC. Their bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendums. Their bid is for forty-eight million, eight hundred and sixty thousand, nineteen dollars and ten cents. That's four eight, eight six oh, oh one nine, point one zero. Next, we have James Construction Group, LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. Their bid bond is included. It's for thirty-eight million, three hundred and twelve dollars, a hundred and ninety-two, point forty-two. Three eight, three one two, one nine two, point four two. Our next bid is from JB James Construction, LLC. Their bid bond is included. They have acknowledged the addendums. It's for thirty-seven million, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine forty-six, seventy-eight cents. Three seven, five nine six, nine four six, point seven eight. This is our last bid, is from OCCI Inc. Their bid bond is included. Uh, they have only acknowledged addendum number four, so it will be considered non-responsive. I don't know if y'all want me to disclose their bid amount or not.
No. No, it's not.
I ask that you approve the reading of the bids.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
We just approve, if that's the largest road project in the history of Bossier City? Is that right?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Unfinished Business adopted an ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the city of Bossier City by annexing approximately two hundred and fifty-eight point two nine nine acres, located in the south half of Section Ten and in the southwest quarter of Section Eleven, township eighteen north, range thirteen west, Bossier Parish, Louisiana. Final reading.
So moved.
Okay.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a supplemental bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of and delivery of one hundred twenty-four million, one hundred fifteen thousand dollars of taxable utilities revenue refunding bonds, series twenty twenty-one of the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, in accordance with the terms of the general bond ordinance adopted on July sixth, twenty-ten, prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? And I see we have our legal counsel, Brennan Black, from Foley and Udel, and thank you for your, all your hard work on this, so... If there's any com, further comments from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance appropriating a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Riverboat Capital Projects Fund to lighting for the Shed Road and Interstate two twenty interchange. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
I was wondering.
I was, yeah. Distracted on the last one, sorry.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to retain Travis H. Morehart, CPA of Cook and Morehart to provide services for the finance department. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance, I'm sorry, that one was deleted. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the attached amendments with Man Shack Consulting Group, Inc., and Attacka Paul Services, LLC, modifying and extending their services to the city of Bossier City. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Any further comment?
I'm going to ask a couple of things, Mr. President. On the, uh, on the contract, there is a section that, um, includes the automatic clause on the three P contract that it automatically renews and for three more years. That was added to this contract. Was that in the last contract? Was that a particular clause?
Mr. Roshenbeck, if you could come up, please.
Yes, Councilman Darby, it was.
And if...
When you say the last con, it was in the last iteration. It was not in the original contract.
That's what I, that's what I want to know, was it in the original contract? So it was added this time in this contract, if it's approved by the city council? Why was that clause added?
For convenience, if the current administration doesn't want to extend it, there's, there's provisions in there for them to elect not to automatically extend it.
Okay. And if the contract were to be extended, would it be extended based on the same fee scale or different fee scale?
That would be negotiated, but potentially the same fee scale.
Okay.
If it was going to be a matter of change in fee, it would need to come before the council.
Yeah. Well, since it's going to automatic, as, as then, that's what I was, not sure if it's going to automatic.
Yeah, it also says, excuse me, election not to renew. Either party may elect not to renew this agreement by providing notice to the other party at least a hundred and twenty business days prior.
Yeah, I did see that, okay, all right. And, and I guess this is a debate for the council. Again, I, I know that, you, you know this to be true. End of three P, there's a, um, amendment that includes the city engineer at a hundred and fifty thousand. So if we approve this, uh, extension of, of their contract, then we also saying that Man Shack City Engineer, which you've done a great job, honestly, will be, uh, extended as well.
That's been deleted.
That's been deleted, okay. I, I wasn't sure.
There was a reduction in the amount of the contract based upon eliminating the city engineer.
Okay, okay, that's been deleted, okay. Well, I, I just to know for sure, I didn't, I didn't read the new revision until Ms. Hall brought it to my attention. Okay, well, I appreciate that. And my last comment has to do with the, uh, judgment of the taxpayers. If we were to, uh, continue with an extension, maybe this hasn't been revised, will it still be six million?
The extension is for a total of four million, six hundred and eighty thousand over the three-year term.
So that's, that's been revised as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and how did that number come, come up? I'm not sure. Because the last number was six million, so...
Yeah, the last number was different, because we were including enhancements within the engineering department.
Okay.
The city's currently managing a hundred and fifty million dollars of capital improvements with three people. And we just did not see that that was sufficient enough to get the products the city deserves and demands, so we were, we were requesting more personnel to ensure that the money that citizens are paying for is being spent appropriately.
Clarification, a million three was deducted from the contract by removing the engineering component.
Okay, and that's in this new, uh, o, ordinance before us today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
And to be clear, we can, we will continue, as long as we are welcome to work in the engineering department to ensure there's a smooth transition between this administration and the new administration.
Okay, all right. But we're still going to do three years with, with this?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, and so my, my, uh, concern remain the same regarding, uh, healthy competition of services such of this magnitude, not that Man Shack has not done a, a good job. Of course, you know, that reduction in your fee scale, that's great. And I suppose if you were to have competition, you may redu, reduce it even more so, because you want to continue to do the work for the city. But that's just my position on the, uh, uh, contract extension. Uh, I would prefer one year, and I would prefer, uh, having, uh, RFPs going forward, uh, for, for this. If Man Shack is, is the company that would be the, uh, company that provide continuation of service, I would be pleased with that. But I think competition is good for the city and the taxpayers, uh, that we do, have a due diligence to make sure they get the best, uh, money for their, uh, services. That's, that's me. Thank you, Mr. President, for the time.
Any further comment?
Well, uh, I'll, I'll make the comment that, um, again, just, um, after reading thoroughly about the origin of three Ps and why they came about and what we are doing as a city and, and what nearly two thousand other entities do with three Ps, that by their nature, they don't offer an opportunity for capitalistic competition. And part of that is because of the requirements that are unique in, uh, having one of these arrangements. Um, you just can't take one engineer and another engineer and say, okay, let's, let's see, now which one's better than the other? And you, you begin to find out that this engineering company is associated with one that specializes in a particular set of disciplines that are different than others. So the reason public law provides for the absence of competition is because it's something that's put together as a, it's assimilated with the city, and it's unique in that it incorporates a, a wide variety of disciplines that as a whole become described as a, as a three P. And so, um, sure, it would be possible if you could somehow take exactly what, what Justin and his group have done and built over a twenty-five-year period and, and just replicate it exactly and get another one over here and say, all right, all right, you two guys, let's, let's just shoot me a price. It, it doesn't work that way because of the, because of the, um, the, the, the quantities, the units and the measurements don't exist. They're, they come as a result of problems that come and go over a period of time. And so, um, it, it, uh, th, there, there's, there's no way that is stated that three Ps can compete. And so I would argue that, that what we're doing is exactly what was set forth and the intent in, um, and, and, and has resulted in solving our problem for our problems that, that come as a result of having a water and sewer system. And, uh, uh, by the way, uh, I guess in my own mind, as I began to examine whether or not it makes sense to renew a contract like this, I, I can't think of a reason why we wouldn't. That, uh, you know, if somebody comes up and you ask them to do a job, and they do it, and they do it extraordinary, and they save you money, and they have all of the talent and everything that is, that you want, why would your first inclination be, well, you know, I think let's, let's look again, let's look at something else? Uh, that, that doesn't make sense to me and doesn't, uh, doesn't answer to others who might be interested in doing such a thing, you know, what, what we do when we find someone who's successful, so... So I intend to vote for it, uh, for, for the very practical reasons that I've stated, and, um, and they're, they're consistent and they're in line with what others do with, uh, professional partnerships such as the one that we have with Man Shack.
Would like to just add, it's not, what we're doing with the city is not unique as far as management of a department. This council voted early, you know, just a month ago for the private management of the Brookshire Grocery Arena, and that contract extended them for five years.
If someone would like to speak in the audience, I'd appreciate it if you'd come to the mic, or if you'd like to carry on a conversation, please go out to the foyer, thank you, excuse me, Mr. Roshenbeck.
It's okay, just a, just a matter of note, that what we're doing here is not unique and that the structure of our contract is not unique as it relates to management of Bossier's very valuable enterprise asset. of Bojer's very valuable enterprise assets. And that was voted seven aye in favor.
Yeah, I think, I, you know, I don't disagree with my co-council member regarding your unique professionalism that you bring to the city as management of the utilities. But I think when you have professional in your field, just like we took a risk on you, there are others out there we could take a risk on if they were to propose what you guys propose. And that's what I've been saying all along. When we, uh, chose your company, Mr. Haydel, it was, uh, based on a risk. It, we never had a company do privatization before. So I'm sure there are other management, engineering firms who can do what you do. I don't, I don't think that's, that would be hard to find. You may not get the bang for the buck that you guys have given us, but I don't think it would be difficult to find. I think it, I think it's out there.
Let me, I'm gonna make a comment then. I, um, I would challenge you to, anyone to tell me where this exists in the state of Louisiana today. Number one, and quite honestly, I would challenge you to show me where it exists in another state across the south. Um, it is truly unique in what we were faced with four or five years ago with a truly deteriorating infrastructure, a deteriorating morale. Certainly, we had twice as many people as we needed, um, in the utility department. We were faced with, uh, help me out here on deficit.
Two million?
Two million dollar deficit. We were looking at having to raise water rates again, which we certainly wanna stay away from that at all costs. We had already raised it several times through the years. And we were able to sit down, brainstorm, um, with Mr. Haydel and Man Shack and come up with something that is very unique and that we've worked on through the years to become more and more efficient. The morale has improved. We're now saving three million dollars a year. That's net of what we're paying Man Shack, by the way, which sometimes seems to go undisclosed. It's always what we're gonna pay Man Shack, uh, not what we're saving the taxpayers after we pay Man Shack. So certainly for the record, we would understand. What would you say that turnaround is, including the fees that we pay Man Shack? Five million? Three and two. We were run, running two, now we're saving three.
Yeah.
So it, it's incredible when you have a professional company that through the years and evolves into what we have, which is very unique. And the personnel that they have in place, I don't know that you could ever go out and say, well, I'm gonna find all these exact people that fit the qualifications. Not to mention Mr. Roshenbach, who is a fantastic individual and we all acknowledge that. A- and his entire staff that he's assimilated, that's taken years, years to get to where we are today. And the last thing we would wanna do is risk that because somebody comes in with a little less money and says they're gonna be able to do it. At the end of the day, professional services are about what they've done and what they've accomplished and what they're gonna provide in the future. I think that's the reason, Mr. Hall, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we're giving and afforded the ability not to have to bid professional services because of those relationships and what they do and the fact that we recognize that.
That's correct.
So, um, I'm certainly passionate about this. Um, everyone on this council's aware that, um, this was something that I sat down with them and we brainstormed and we came up and we visited with the, the council and the administration. And it was born and, and it has truly been a game changer for the taxpayers of Bojer City. So, um, with that said, I'll yield the floor.
I, I would just like to say that, uh, you know, I, I do think our situation is unique. I know when some cities privatize their, their utilities, they sell their utilities to another company. And then you read about in the paper where they cut corners because they wanna make a profit. What, Bojer City owns their utilities. We did not sell them. We, we have a contract with Man Shack to assist us in running these. And the strategy has been to save money. And you've saved us money. And we have engineering meetings where we discuss projects that we can do proactively that save money. And for example, we're replacing every sewer line in Shady Grove. We're replacing every sewer line in Sun City. Uh, if I need sewer lines replaced in Southern Gardens, I call Ben. It might be ten o'clock Saturday night, someone has a clogged sewer line and they're, they're on it. And, and so it's, this requires trust, though. A- and I think that you've earned that trust. And I, I don't know why w- we would change courses when, when we're saving money and you're taking steps proactively to maintain our system. Uh, we're not constantly having emergency breakdowns like we used to. And those emergency breaks cost a whole lot more than, than routine maintenance. And I can testify that, that Man Shack has a plan of routine maintenance that I don't think any other city has. And, and that is saving us money. We have to spend money, yes, but it saves us money in the long time, i- in the long term. So that's why I'll be voting for this, because it's the best thing for the taxpayers. Uh, and I think they're gonna get a better product, uh, and, and will be able to keep our, our water rates, uh, as they are for a longer period of time, so. Thank you.
One other thing I, that Mr. Irwin hit upon. And, um, in fact, I'll ask the Chiefs of Gone to come up to the mic, please. Um, it's something he's all too familiar with that prior, um, under our, the way we used to run our water and sewer department. Chief, how many instances did we have where our fire hydrants didn't work?
Uh, it was, uh-
I'm not putting you on the spot, but it was multiple.
It was three instances and I think it was two thousand fifteen or sixteen. I don't remember which year.
Yeah.
The first three fires of that year, the fire hydrants didn't work. They were reported by Utiliserv in October the year prior. And they still weren't fixed. The last fire was in March of that year. When we responded to it, caught the hydrant, the stem was not working, the hydrant didn't work. So we had to call another truck in and lay a supply line. Once we laid four hundred foot of five inch, we can't just pick it up. That truck's out of service, so we had to call in another truck to come lay the line for us. I remember that fire, I remember all three fires, actually.
So, and, but we were being assured that they all were, you know, being repaired and they were functional and so forth. I recall the meetings that we had here with our then utility department. And since that time, we won't belabor that point, but I just wanted for the record to show that i- in specific instances and now we can say that under the contract with Man Shack, the fire hydrants, for the most part, all work. And one of the main reasons that we went from a class two to a class one is?
We, our, our water is-
Fire hydrants and water pressure and?
We would always go down to, uh, they would test the same hydrants. Uh, one off of, um, Scott or Green Street in front of that school. That one was always just dribbling out. And we went to the same ones every time. You can look back every five years where we get our PIL inspection. They go to the same one. We go in front of, uh, the church on John Wesley. That was another bad hydrant and he knew exactly where to go, but now we don't have those. Uh, so we got a class one.
Which means for everyone that's here today and all the taxpayers in Bojer City, that your insurance rates are lower for your homeowners. Businesses pay lower insurance rates when you go from a class two to a class one. And it costs the taxpayers nothing. All we did was put in the service, all of the hydrants and brought up to pressure what we should have been doing all along. And we attribute that to the Man Shack Public Private Partnership and the team that they've put together. Is that fairly stated?
Yes, sir.
And I'd go far as to say is it, it's saving money, but it's saving lives also. When you hook up to a fire hydrant and it doesn't work.
They, they have been very well. It's a, less than a twenty-four hour turnaround normally when we, they get in. They notify us that there is a hydrant, they bag it, so we know going in that the hydrant doesn't work. And then within twenty, it's about a twenty-four hour turnaround. They'll get another email letting us know the hydrant's back up and running. So we'll mark it in the alarm room, dispatch won't tell us about it. They'll tell us that's a bagged hydrant. But the most important part is we'll know going in, when it has a bag on it, we know what that mean. Not bagging them and they being broken is the worst thing that can happen for us.
And my, my point is it saves lives and it's saving money.
Right.
Thank you, Chief. Is there any further discussion? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Oh, I didn't vote. It's not, it's not permitting me to vote.
It showed that you had already voted. What is your vote, Mr. Darby?
No, I didn't vote. It's a no vote.
Okay. Motion carries. And I do have it changed that your vote was a no vote, Mr. Darby. Introducing ordinance to approve report of reconciliation for the Bojer Fire Department burn building project. Ordinance ninety-three of twenty nineteen with a decrease in project cost of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. First reading.
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Is yours left there, Mr. Williams? Is it there now? What is your vote, Mr. Williams?
It's a yea.
It's a yea. Motion carries.
Yep.
Adopt a resolution to fill two laborer-one positions in the Public Works Grass Cutting and Street Sweeping Division. First and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Do you see it now, Mr. Williams? It's there now, okay.
Thanks to Mr. Free.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to fill a part-time animal control helper position in the Public Works Animal Control Division. First and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one of two police officers for the Bojer City Police Department. First and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one records clerk for the Bojer City Police Department. First and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of a recreation laborer-one and backfilling any positions this may create for parks and recreation. First and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approved parade permit fee waiver for Kerry the Load National Relay, May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one.
Some move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approved placement in the official minutes, the appointment of Sergeant Charles Bridges, reappointment as the Bojer Police Department, Bojer Police Department, board member of the Bojer City Fire Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board, appointment effective March seventh, twenty twenty-one, and expires March sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Is it not showing up, counsel?
Is that?
Is it showing up?
Yeah. We voted up.
Okay.
Vote again, or?
No, sir, it's up there, it's just, it's-
No, that's a permit.
Mine showed defeated, but then it flashed off.
Okay, let's vote again.
Are we having issues again?
I'm not sure what's going on here.
Yeah, well. We can always go back. I still think we ought to get the-
I'm gonna clear the votes and we'll start over.
Go forward.
We're not going back. We're not going back.
Yeah, I never heard that song by Eddie Money.
I have.
Okay.
Alright, it should be up there.
Alright, cast your vote.
Mr. Larkin, is yours there? There you go. Motion carries. Let me do something different this time and see if this works better. Approved placement in the official minutes, the appointment of Fire Captain Jason D. Shelton, reappointment as the Fire Department Representative on the Bojer City Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board, appointment effective March seventh, twenty twenty-one, and expires March sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Consider the approval of the application by Centric Pipe LLC, four thirty Hamilton Road, Bojer City, Louisiana, under the industrial tax exemption program, which would forgive eighty percent city property tax millage for up to ten years if all criteria were continued to be met.
Jimmy, who will be check-
Motion in a second, just to talk.
Some move.
Second. Who will be checking on all the criteria to make sure it's being met for ten years?
Uh, the state has, uh, they, they follow up and make sure that they meet the job requirement and the investment requirement, uh, for their expansion.
Any further discussion, any questions from the audience?
Would, would they have to return the, the saving to the city if they found that they didn't do what they supposed to do?
Their exemption would be revoked. The state would move to do that and we would join in if they didn't meet the requirements that they, they pledged to meet in the process.
But they don't have to, do they pay the money back, too?
They would have to. If they got the exemption and they don't meet the criteria, they would.
So it'd be retroactive to the day we approve it?
Right.
Okay. Wonder where that?
I have a motion by Mr. Larkin and a second by Mr. Williams.
Any further discussion or questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Mayor?
Nothing, thank you.
Alright. Like to wish everyone a great week, meeting adjourned.